But, Fudge Legions? One thing. Ready? Fudge Legions to the flag, the United States of America, to the public, which stands one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Look, speak, Pollyanna, buzzin' through. We've got Joan Hebert.
All set, thank you.
Dennis, I know where you're on. Mike, Kathy, pausing.
Yep.
Any comments, Mike?
No, we're good for now. Well, wait, man, Kathy's coming.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I have my grandson this week, he's going to camp. Not used to these young ones. I'd like to thank Jay Tuttle, the Public Works Foreman and his men, for planting the beautiful six-foot blue spruce tree at the Andover Historical Society Museum. Jay suggested we plant the tree that was donated to the town in celebration of the 175th anniversary that we'll have in 2023. I want to furthermore thank Scott Person, the selectman, for purchasing mulch and soil to make sure the tree did not die. And I know he checks on it constantly, and I thank you very much for that, Scott. And I want to thank my husband, Mike, and Kathy Derosia for the, for taking turns in watering the tree, just to make sure it doesn't die. Thank you.
Nick Levine.
That's, uh, he's with Connecticut Voice Channel.
Oh, okay. Amber Armertic.
I'm all set, thank you.
Anne Kramay.
I'm all set, thank you.
Diane Chocat.
I'm all set, thanks.
And I've got a 707-5579.
That's me, Marina, I'm all set.
I'm sorry? All right, can you mute the appropriate parties? Paul?
I am not the host, so Eric, can you take care of that, please?
Sure, who do you want muted?
Everybody but a board member. Thank you. All right, additions, deletions.
I'm gonna suggest you add two items. The first would be 9L, which would be generator for Andover Elementary School. And the second would be item 16B, an executive session to discuss a collective bargaining agreement.
Um, okay. We also need 16C, contract renewal. So, that works. Anything else? Anybody else? Mr. Murray?
Nope, I'm good.
All right, so, uh, I'll make a motion that we add 9L. School generator, 16B. Uh, discussion of union bargaining and 16C contract renewal.
A second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Jeff, I can't hear or see you.
Hi.
Thank you. 3L. All right, uh, Charter Revision Commission, um, we're gonna wait on that. We'll accommodate them when Scott Person gets back on. So we're gonna wait on 4A currently. Appointments, any?
None.
Designations?
None.
Town Admin's reports, I think you emailed this late to everybody, or just noted it. Um, so if you want the full effect, it's in the packet on the website, correct, Eric, with pictures?
That is correct. I emailed out in a bridged version because I couldn't put that many pictures in there.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, real quick, in terms of town hall operations, Willie Bell is repainting, doing exterior painting right now. Um, the gazebo has come out really well overall, we've got a lot of compliments as we've had a bunch of events there. Um, you know, there's a lot of projects going on in my office. Right now, we're working on, you know, the STEEP grant, that's kind of taking up a good chunk of my time. Um, also dealing with the federal local bridge program stuff. As far as the town clerk's office, town clerk has been out for a bit, but she's back as of tonight. Um, as of July 1, we issued approximately 550 transfer station stickers, um, which is less than half of the total amount, um, which is another way of saying a lot of people wait till theirs is expired, and then they get mad, and then they come into the office.
Yeah, unfortunately, while I was there, about 10 stickers walked out, so. Uh, is there a reason that we didn't have the assistant working the extra hours how we normally have in the past?
What do you mean, the assistant working the extra hours?
Well, to cover some, some more of what Carol, because Carol's obviously out, she's on vacation, so.
Because the assistant didn't want to work the extra hours. It's not that it's not budgeted.
Okay, so she said no to it.
Um, da, 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 we discussed that.
Wasn't that, I, pardon me, but wasn't that part of the discussion when she was hired that she'd be responsible for filling in some of the hours?
Well, what has to happen is Carol has to officially, per the union contract, write me a letter or notify me that she is going to be taking on extra hours and when. But since Carol doesn't even notify me that she's going on vacation, that would be a little difficult. So, that has not happened, and her assistant has not worked the extra hours.
Okay. Are you saying you were not aware Carol went on vacation until Carol went?
Typically, no. Yep, I find out when I try to find her and she's not there. Yep.
So you weren't notified this time?
No.
Yeah. Um, okay.
So, the next big thing that's really important is the town engineer. We did receive 14 solicitations for the town engineering, uh, spot, a committee, including myself, Jed Larson, and Ed Serrisley narrowed it down to four. We interviewed four. And Adrian was also there, uh, part of the interview process. Um, so the four firms we interviewed were Nathan Jacobson, BSC, Coast Jensen and Miller, and Leonard Engineering. Um, we narrowed it down to two firms. Um, we still gotta do a little bit more background before we finally select the firm. But the great thing is that we have really good options, which is encouraging.
And any of the top, any of the top four would have been good, so.
Correct.
Or the four we picked, I should say.
Correct. Okay, Nick. But, somebody else can interject?
No, go ahead.
Next subject, debris management. So, the last couple of times when we had storms and we had lots of debris, um, we really haven't been able to put in the FEMA claims for it. Uh, because it requires an enormous amount of paperwork and an enormous amount of work upfront. Um, realistically, we probably have to hire somebody to deal with it during the storm if we're going to do it. Um, you know, and we have to spend quite a bit of time getting a plan in place ahead of time. Um, and the question is, is this really worth it? Um, my own gut feeling tells me no, but if we got hit by a super bad storm, we would be regretting that decision. Um, and the reason why I bring it to your attention is that, you know, there's one of a couple things has to happen. Either we have to, you know, get somebody on board upfront, and then work out a management process and the documentation to do this. Um, you know, or we just accept the fact that we're not gonna be able to claim it if we do get nailed with a storm. Um, and I feel that's really a discussion that's, I wanna bring to your attention now. Um, I mean, I'm not expecting a decision tonight, but I just wanna say that that's something that at some point we're gonna have to discuss as a board and decide whether we wanna commit the resources to do it or not. Um, because reading through all the stuff it takes to get reimbursed by FEMA, um, that's why I haven't even tried the last two times we had a storm, that we had a FEMA declaration, because currently, we don't really have the capability to even document what we would need to, to get reimbursed for. So, um, I think that's something that's gonna be a future, uh, you know, future topic.
Is that something you can send out to us on a separate, just so we can see what we're actually looking at?
I could send you all the documentation if you wanna read through it. That's not a problem. Okay.
It's sort of, you know, trying to have a discussion about something that we haven't seen. Um, you skipped a couple things, audit?
Uh, we still don't have an audit in place. The last we got back from the auditor was the, uh, total difference between, you know, both sides of the ledger is under the amount that's required that, where it would be a major audit finding. Um, so, but the auditor hasn't really said how he wanted, wants to proceed at this point.
Okay. Um, and how much longer is that job posting open for, and have we received applications?
For what? For the treasurer position?
Yep.
So, it's a rolling application, so it stays open until we select the candidate. So far, we've had two applicants for the position.
Okay. Um, so at this point, are you thinking what, we keep it open for another week or so, and then get, then start to put together committee, or?
That's, I, I think that makes sense. My suggestion is that the Board of Selectmen designates one person, the Board of Finance designates one person. The Board of Finance has basically said they're gonna designate Diane Chocat. Um, and I think they may have picked a second person. I have to go back and look through the notes. Um, and then whoever else you want on that committee. And we go for it.
Um, any take on that, Paula? Mr. Murray?
Um, as far as who's gonna be on that committee?
Size, makeup, and yeah.
I think, I think you would make the most sense.
Okay.
At this point. Um.
I have no problem doing it, unless somebody else wants it. Jeff?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty book solid right now, so if you wanna do it, that's fine. If not, I'll do it.
Okay, but no, I don't have a problem doing it, I'll make the time, so the other issue is, um, who do we want on the committee? I mean, we, we, I think in the past, we've tried to do this with a lot of people, and I don't know that it's worked all that well. Eric, can we still get someone from another town to, to hop on?
Yeah, we would definitely do that. We would definitely go for at least one finance director of an adjacent town.
Okay.
I think it makes sense, um, with Diane, you, Eric, and then somebody from another town, just to get an outside perspective too, so.
Okay. All right, we'll leave it open to see if, um, uh, Jeff, the, um, would also like to be on it, um, or if Scott wants a spot, but tentatively, I will take the spot. Um, okay. So, we still don't have access to Phoenix?
Reporting in progress.
Uh, no, we currently do not.
All right.
Uh, do we have a timeframe on, on when that's gonna be accessible, or do we have an update?
Not really, no. Supposedly, the server is fully rebuilt on the school side.
Yep.
Um, and it works, but we've never had access to it.
Does this, has the school been made aware that if we don't have access to it, the school audit's not getting done either? This is getting a little frustrating.
If you're asking me, yes, Val's been made aware of that conversation.
Okay. Um, so we have something else to their, to, is it Tyler, is that their guy?
Correct.
And we're still waiting to hear back?
Correct.
All right, um, are we going to, what's our situation with admins as far as servers and where the data is held right now?
The data is on the school server. Not on our server.
All right, so are we gonna migrate that off of there? Cause I, I'm kinda done going through this with trying to access if their, their people aren't responding because they don't work for us, they work for the school, so. What do we need to do to migrate that over? Are we gonna have two different modules anyways, cause we have two bank accounts now?
Well, if you decided to much, to migrate it, you would have to probably sign a standalone contract with admins and be willing to pay the entire cost of that.
Why can't we have the school on the town server?
I mean, why?
Why are we, why are we moving it if, if we're worried about, because we literally been messing around with this for how many months? The server failed when? Back in February? March?
April, but you're right, it has been an ongoing issue, no question.
And I'm basically, you know, we're banging a hard against a wall here, and it's not being taken seriously, so. If it's not gonna be taken seriously, then we need to do something, because we're the ones that are dealing with the problem. You know?
So you, as a board, want to transfer admins from the school's domain to the town's domain? That's what you're asking me as a board. Is that correct?
Paula, Jeff, what's your thoughts?
I don't know, I would like to get, uh, Scott's and Jeff's input on this as well, since there's only three of us here tonight. Jeff, Jeff would be a, would probably be able to contribute quite a bit to this discussion.
Yeah, I can tell you, I mean, that's fine. We'll, we'll hold that thought. Um, between now and August meeting, since Jeff isn't gonna be on tonight, I don't think, um, why don't we get our options on that? Talk to our tech guy and find out what it would cost to migrate it. You know?
Yeah, Adrian, that's a good idea, then we can, uh, discuss it at the next meeting.
I just, this is getting ridiculous, you know? Come on here, we complain about it, we, we're waiting, we're waiting, we're waiting, next month, we finally get something. Now it's rebuilt, but we still can't access it, so, you know, I mean, this is, this is a joke. You know, and it's not funny anymore. So if the school's not gonna take it seriously, and they're not gonna step up and, and understand it's also their responsibility to help us get the audit completed, you know?
Is it a, is it a matter of, um, I'm just thinking, it's summertime, is the staff just not there to, at the school to talk to who they need to? Is that?
This is a, this is actually a Valerie issue. I asked Valerie about it the last time I had an opportunity, and she said it was a town problem, not a school problem. But it's their tech support, so their tech support is dragging their feet, because they're not hearing from the school that this is a priority, apparently, you know?
Okay.
We, we didn't get, we did not get anywhere with them rebuilding the server at all, until we asked for an incident report. Which anybody who's in IT understands, if you ask for an incident report, that's not a good thing. So, when we asked for an incident report, we finally got not our tech guy, but their, his boss finally stepped in and made a phone call to us. Why do you want an incident report? Correct, Eric?
That is correct.
You know?
All right, well, let's, let's talk about it at the next meeting with Jeff, when Jeff's here, like we talked about, and see what we can find out, find out in between now and then.
Right.
I know it's, I know it's frustrating, I know you, but I, I don't think we're gonna get answers.
I don't have, I don't have a problem waiting until, till, till Jeff and, uh, and Scott are part of the conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah, Adrian, I share your frustration, it's just, you know, and I think it should probably belong on the town server, since the town is, uh, operating pretty much 365. And the schools, you know, they do have a summer break, and maybe they're not staffed as much, so it would probably make sense to, 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 to put the information on our server.
Yeah, and I, I think my other, my other frustration is the fact that the server had to be rebuilt, instead of having a hard backup. You know, they had to, they had to go back and do a raid rebuild. What, that should have happened immediately, and instead of happening immediately, it didn't get addressed until, you know, just a couple weeks ago, so.
I don't disagree that that was not addressed as a priority on the school side.
All right, well, let's, let's talk about it next month, and see, we, we can find out.
Um, Building Department, um, are we, um, are we taking payments now on everything through there? Everything's up and running now?
What do you mean by taking payments through there?
We were gonna be working on being able to take payments through permit link, are we still working on that?
No, all payments can go through permit link.
So it's up and running now?
You can pay electronically now if you so desire.
Okay, great. All right, I interrupted you at Dever's Management to go backwards. Um, what do you wanna do with the, with the Devers Management? We, we wanna just get the information out to us, and then we'll talk about if that's something we try to put out there? Is, is this something that? I guess the question is, what is the skillset for the paperwork that we're talking about? You know?
So, it's just an enormous amount of time. I mean, like, if you really look through what FEMA's asking, if you have to get rid of a branch, you know, you have to do everything from log the GPS coordinates of the branch to take a picture of that, you know, and you have to have a pre-authorized spot to put all the debris. You have to segregate the debris that comes from town-owned property from that of individual property owners, which means you have to have some security on your debris pits. Um, it's just, you know, I question whether it's ever worth the time and effort for us to be able to do it. Now, the, the problem is, if you ever had a really catastrophic event, you know, say you had a true cat three that came through, and if you look at the National Weather Service predictions of 20 to 30% of the canopy gone in that case, I, I mean, it would be huge dollars, and we would be in trouble if we didn't happen, so. I guess.
Can we, can we approach it as a major storm type thing where we, we put a plan in place to address the things that you just mentioned? And then, you know, we, we pull that plan out when we get a, like you said, a major? The issue simply is.
What I'm saying is, we probably would need professional help to develop a plan. You know, and we would have to have a pre-arrangement with either a company or an individual that was designated to, you know, administer the program during an emergency.
Okay.
And you can't, it can't be in an emergency that you decide to do it. You have to do, all that has to be ahead of time. And it's really just a question that, do you wanna deploy the resources to do it? Um, or do you wanna roll the dice? And it's, that's why eventually I wanna come back to the board. I'm just letting you know that there's gonna be further discussion on this, cause this is a pretty complex issue, whether we go after it or we don't.
Okay. All right, moving on, you got the drainage work on Shawty and Birch. Shimmy's finished, and you're going into chip sealing, right?
Yep, so Gorman will be doing the chip sealing hopefully at the end of the month.
Okay.
Um, we did get Eversource to agree to partner with us again and split the costs of tree trimming. Um, we're probably going after Gilead Road, cause that's our, our worst single road left, and that's such a long road that will, should probably chew up the majority of our town tree work budget. We'll save some back for emergency stuff, but the rest, we're probably gonna spend the whole thing addressing Gilead.
And that's a partner situation with Eversource and?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, um, I already told you that the other really big change was that the federal local bridge program, we're now gonna be able to fully fund both the Bunker Hill Bridge, uh, as well as the Long Hill Bridge. So, that's gonna be a big, really large cost savings to the town. Um, we will still need to have the ability to, because at this point, the funding will still come through the town, which means we will have to pay for the construction and get reimbursed. And we'll need the ability to fund roughly $500,000 worth of work, worst-case scenario, between the time we're getting reimbursed and the time we have to outlay the cash to the contractors. So, we can do that out of the unexpended fund balance. Um, you know, or we can keep the money that is set aside for the Bunker Hill Bridge and use that as the, the swing funding. Um, that's really a board decision. Um, there is a chance that they're gonna get rid of that, and the state will pay directly. If they do, then we can repurpose that money, you know, at any time, but we just don't know yet. I'm just letting you know that the really good news is ultimately, we're gonna get 100% reimbursement on the bridges, um, which is fantastic.
And what do we currently have in that fund right now?
Uh, I wanna say we have around 380,000. But that's just off the top of my head, I, I actually don't have that number.
Okay. All right.
Okay, uh, we signed the letter of intent for the Long Hill Road Bridge. Um, I waited until, to sign the letter of intent until I knew the program was gonna have 100% reimbursement. Um, the good thing is, um, I signed it the day they announced the 100% reimbursement, cause everybody and their brother submitting bridges right now. Um, I think I was talking to the DOT rep, he said one of the towns submitted seven bridges at the same time. Um, so, now that the funding source is open, everybody's trying to get in on it. The good news is, we've already got our acceptance letter, so we know we're getting funded under that. Uh, so, small bridges and culverts in the, the community center, I don't have any real updates, um, on that. Adrian, maybe you could give it on the community center portion?
Yes, the community center, I would just have, like, a couple of minor things, I reached out to you today for the bullet for, um, the wage, uh, the wage, um, language that we need. Um, and I also had to reach out to, um, um, the architect to get just a couple more pieces of information that I cannot read off of the, um, off of the documents that we had in-house. Um, unfortunately, when they blew them up, they didn't, they did not enlarge the, um, the dimensions, so just trying to give a better descriptor of dimensions and things like that, um, for the, for the, um, for the RFP. So, um, hopefully, a day or two here, we'll have that out to people to kinda read, and then, um, be ready to stick it out there. And get some, uh, get some numbers.
Okay, as far as the Times Farm Bridge, you know, that closeout is still inching towards completion. Uh, we just got a bill from the state for, uh, their portion through Coast Jensen and Miller, who was doing. Who was doing the, uh, did the initial evaluation work on the bridge. So that was the holdback. Um, I gotta review the paperwork before I pay that. But that probably is our final payment and represents full closeout of that project, which.
And just so, just so residents understand, this is a bridge that actually has been functional for what, three years now? Four?
Uh, it was completed and opened in two thousand and seventeen. So it was five years ago that we.
Five years.
Substantially the bridge, yes.
So for perspective on how long that those funds may be tied up.
Right, the state does not work quickly, that's for sure. The good news is we're gonna have about a hundred thousand dollars in that swing fund that could be applied towards other, uh, bridge and culvert projects.
Because I think we had one eighty at one point, so they have obviously built it, built us for some other things, so.
Correct.
Okay, Steve Grant.
So Steve Grant, I'm still working on cost data. Um, the next thing in terms of regulatory approval. The eight twenty-four referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I already broached at their last meeting. It will be finalized on July eighteenth. I would hope that they will approve it. Um, but I'm not absolutely sure, cause it's their commission to do as they, uh, so choose. Um, we did get the results back from asbestos and lead sampling. There is a presence of some asbestos and some lead. Um, so we're going to need, uh, estimates from remediation contractors. I have some estimates currently for deme- for demolition contractors, so we have a reasonable ballpark for that.
Do any, do any of those people have in-house that we can reach back out to them?
None of them. There were, I did see some of the, uh, uh, the abatement contractors also offered demolition. So I'm gonna reach out to them and see whether they'll quote it both ways, just abatement and abatement plus demolition. Um, so the survey is basically complete. There's one back corner the surveyor still has some questions about. He's coming back to resurvey, uh, that back corner this week. But we basically have a completed boundary survey at this point. Um, I did apply for a variance to the zoning board of appeals. That had to be filed as of last Friday. I got out, got out the, uh, application and the notice to the butters. Um, so we're in good shape there. The zoning board of appeals meeting is July twentieth. Um, BSC is on the hook for getting us an engineering design for the foundation. I'm hoping to have that this week. I did meet with millennial, millennium builders. They're CROGS EZIQC vendor for this project. Um, I chose them because I think that's the one way we can get something that meets our current purchasing policy. And we get a firm estimate in time for the grant. Um, we will need a formal resolution by the Board of Selectment. Um, but before that, we need the eight twenty-four referral anyway. And we sure as heck should have the variance in place, so we know we're actually gonna get granted a variance. Um, it might take a special meeting, uh, or we might be able to wait till the next Board of Selectment meeting and still get the grant in on time. Um, I'll keep you informed when I get a little farther.
Do you need, um, do you need something from us for the, um, variance to the purchasing policy?
Yeah, I think we should, uh, discuss that. Um, so I was going to discuss that on item HC under the steep grant application for fifteen Center Street, but we could do it here if you prefer.
Let's just do it now, get it out of the way. The short version.
So I'll give you the short version. Um, we, I did cut one corner. You know, in this, and that is I issued, um, the, I issued the authorization to survey it to BSC Engineering. Um, and the reason I did that was I needed a ZBA application submitted on seven, seven, and you only approved me to even start this grant process on, you know, roughly, uh, twenty days before that. So the only way I was getting that was to, uh, go with the contractor or I knew I could get it in time.
Well, and just for clarification for the rest of the board, BSC's been doing our town engineering work for a little bit while we've been interviewing and going through the process of putting out RFP for town engineering, so.
Right. So the bottom line is anything that is over five thousand dollars is supposed to be competitively bid. And I did not. The Board of Finance had some issues with that. And I resolved the issues by paying for that portion of the, uh, fee that was greater than five thousand dollars. So basically I wrote a check to the town for twenty-six hundred dollars to do this, so I could keep the project going.
Have you since, have you since received that money back?
No.
Okay.
Right.
So the issue here is that the Board of Finance wanted you to come back to the Board of Selectment and CIP as the governing body to ask for an exemption here and then pass that along to them. So.
Correct.
Let's, so to make this easier, let's just, I'll make a motion that we, um, ask for variance to the purchasing policy for contracting of engineering services for the Center Street project, Steve Grant.
Awesome, good.
Discussion, Jeff?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eric, get your check back, please.
Yeah, Board of Finance still has to approve though. So one more meeting to go. Not a problem.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's basically where we are. The only other thing I would say with the steep grant is because we know the school wants to apply for a steep grant too. Um, you know, what I would just like the board to, to authorize is that I don't know what the exact amount of this steep grant is. I mean, cause I don't have all the cost numbers. I will, you know, certainly by the time it, it needs to submit it. And I would just ask that we allow the Board of Education to submit the second application for whatever funds remain between that and the cap of five hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I think we already let the school know at the last meeting that they, we wanted verification that they were gonna have outside access to that, to that park. So we're still waiting on clarification of that. She said she would get that. So. I believe we need to have, we need to see that, that that's done before we're gonna move forward with that. That's my own personal take.
Right, so I can send you what Val sent me to that effect. Um, I originally thought she sent it to the whole Board of Selectment. I did not realize she just sent it to myself and Jeff McGuire. So part of that fault is mine. I should have forwarded that to the whole board, um, several weeks ago when I got it. So I would be happy to forward that to the board. But again, you don't actually, I mean, as long as you're okay in principle with them doing the second application, then you know.
I, I, I can't speak for anyone else. In principle, I, I certainly am, but my caveat, and I think it's fair, is that if the town is gonna be putting this type of money into something, that it should be accessible to the town. You know, and that, so it doesn't make any sense to have an ADA accessible playground. It's the only way you can access it is from the school, so I definitely wanna see that stuff, otherwise I wouldn't be supportive of it. You know? I mean, if that's the case, we can take that playground and put it, you know, in a different location that everyone can use it, you know? And not just outside of school hours or, or, you know? So.
But what's the, what's the deadline on all this? It's coming up soon, right? So Eric.
Uh, August fifteenth.
Which is?
We have a meeting before that.
Okay.
So yes, if you can forward that stuff to us and then if we have any questions, we'll need to reach out to her to get that information before the next meeting.
Yep. Okay. So, uh, you know, the connectivity grant project has been stalled a little bit. They, we had to re-change the contractor that was doing the timber rail fence. We had to do that to meet our minority contractor set aside. Um, that project has been rebid out to them and we're just waiting for the contractor to get in and do the work. Um, hopefully that will take place relatively quickly. Um, we are talking about spending some extra money on that, both for plantings and also for, uh, lighting on the parking area there. Um, and we're doing that because we have the extra funds in the grant to accommodate that. So it's not something that's coming out of taxpayer, uh, dollars. Um, so I will keep you guys all appraised of that. Um, I had hoped it was gonna be done August one, but it's, we're clearly not gonna be fully done by then.
Was that contract competitive or did it go up because we had to change contractors?
Uh, from my end, I don't know, because we negotiate based on unit price through the program, so it's, it hasn't changed the town's cost or the town's, how much of the grant it's gonna chew up.
Okay.
Um, as far as the townwide alarms, FTP finally finished the alarm system rebuild slash install at the Public Works Building. Um, it's been really annoying me that it's taken this long, but they finally have got that system fully, uh, addressed. We have had some problems in a couple really bad rainstorms with signal strength in some of the buildings, because currently we have interior antennas. Um, so we are looking at relocating some of the antennas to the exterior of the building. The one we're having the most problems with is the library. Um, we just had to work out where exactly we could drill to give us the minimum amount of problems and still mount a, uh, exterior antenna. Um, so that's it for townwide alarm monitoring. Um, let's see. Um, the good news is we are in the black for last year's budget. Um, not by a lot, but, um, but we're definitely, uh, cash positive for last year. So that's a really good thing. We're a lot farther along to closing out than we were in previous years at this point. We still do have some expenses that are not accounted for. Um, we did encumber the cost of the resident state trooper, so that doesn't show up on the balance, uh, that's still, uh, that's still there. We would expect to get the bill for the resident state trooper sometime in August, which is normally when the state gets around sending it. Um, what I don't know is how, because they bill us, they don't really tell us ahead of time what their indirect costs are for that position. And given the cost of fuel and how much resident state troopers burn, I don't know how that's gonna affect the cost of the trooper program. Um, we did have a little bit of slack in that, because partway through the year, um, when our current resident state trooper came on, he had a lot less seniority than our previous one. So presumably there, there's some cost savings there that could absorb the, any cost in indirects.
Um, given the status for the finance office right now, have we looked into or reached out to the auditor, see if we can? If there's someone he can recommend for, you know, assistance to help out Marina to, so that she doesn't get buried while we're in the process of looking for the treasure here?
I have not specifically reached out to the auditor to ask that question.
I guess the question is, do we need it? I mean, I'm assuming we might need something at some point here, you know?
Marina, what do you think? You're on the call?
Um, I think I'd like to get someone. I think I'll just need help with, um, you know, like the cleanup after the audit of some accounts and make sure everything is all straight and narrow going forward. I, I think I should be okay until you guys get a treasure, but, um, I mean, I guess it wouldn't help her to ask Michael what you think as well.
Okay, so let's put that on the list of questions when we talk to Michael about the, the audit situation as well.
Okay.
If he can refer us to accounting firms that may be able to handle it, you know?
Okay.
And we should have, we should have something to work with, whether it's honestly, maybe that's something that we, if we can get it done quickly. We encumber from last year, cause it's really a last year issue anyways, you know?
You'd have to ask that one of the Board of Finance.
I'm sure, given that it's a common sense thing, though, they would be okay with it. But let's try to get an answer from Michael first.
Okay. Uh, we have been notified that, uh, the American Recovery Act funding the second allotment has not been released yet, but it's likely to be released fairly quickly. But I can't tell you what fairly quickly means in the state's vernacular. Um, but that should be released at some point relatively soon. Um, as far as town hall projects, the water bottle, bottle filler that we wanted, which was the less expensive unit, uh, we finally once again found an online supplier that had it available. So we did order that, that is being installed tomorrow. Um, the VoIP system at the town hall and all the locations is up and running smoothly. We have some lingering issues. We got double billed by Granite, which we're trying to resolve. Um, you know.
Double, did we double pay or did we catch it?
No, we haven't paid them, but, um, you know, but it's an outstanding bill that we're arguing over. Um, there are a couple might relatively minor issues that we're gonna have to work out with the prior provider. The libraries come back to us and said they have an issue with one of their, uh, their phone in the basement. They want some kind of cordless unit. So we'll have to make some minor changes, but overall the system is up and running. It works a lot better than what we had before. So overall, it's good and it's costing us roughly half per month what the previous system was.
And so we canceled the other system, we're out?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
What was the problem with the AC? I remember it being down, but what did we end up deciding it was?
Uh, you know, honestly, I think it just got frozen up. Um, the indoor, indoor coil was completely frozen. Um, we do still have to get a better pan under the indoor because it has overflowed several times and screwed up the drywall in the bathrooms. So I do need to get the HVAC guy back in to address that.
But it just freezing up, there usually is a reason for that. Either it's under, over. There's a line issue, there's a refrigerant quantity problem. It doesn't.
Right, so I, I was there when the HVAC tech came, you know, and, and that was the first thing we checked, which was the superheat and the subcooling, you know? It's well within the normal range for the instrument. Um, it was not, at the time he tested it, it was functioning normally and it has not been a problem since. My suspicion, and it's only my suspicion, is that what they did when they had the, the election is they left all the windows open in the building.
Oh, jeez.
They opened all the, the windows and the AC was running. Then they got enough moisture in the system that they caused a problem with. That is my guess, but I don't know. Uh, it certainly worked fine on hotter days afterward.
Alright.
Um, so I think it's not a problem that needs serious addressing.
Okay. Alright.
Um, so as far as the transfer station, uh, Mr. Lumber did complete his Eagle Scout project. And there's now sorting bins at the transfer station and I would really like to thank him for all his work with that. And we did relocate the tires to the blue building. Um, you know, from where it was. So that whole little shack part is set up for the, uh, cart program. And then the tires go in the blue building. We did have an issue with one very unhappy resident whose driveway was in Andover and houses in Coventry. That's insisting he has the right to use the Andover transfer station. But we're frankly just not issuing them a sticker. There was a little bit of negative publicity over that, but you know, that happens. You know, I don't know if you want any more explanation over that.
No, I think that's addressed. It's gone to, the taxes have been sent to Coventry, so it won't be an issue anymore.
Right. So we are, we did on Saturday, apparently turn away an awful lot of people who didn't have a sticker. Several of whom have complained about it. We did the same thing we do most years, which was give people one week amnesty. So the first Saturday and the first Wednesday, you know, we just warn people that their sticker's out of date and they will not be allowed back in until they have a correct one. You know, and then we turn them away. So there was
Can we talk to Carol Lee about maybe doing a late night this week? Or doing something on Saturday for Saturday hours? Given the number of people that were turned away because of the limited hours in her office. And I mean, I also saw people walking out because it was so backed up in there. So I think we tried to, we need to, given that we didn't, we weren't able to cover the missing hours for a variety of reasons, I think we need to do something to make it up to the residents.
Oh, she's on, she's on the call. Do you want to ask her now or offline?
Carol, you on?
I am.
Carol, is there any way we can do something with maybe Saturday hours or something? Cause the number of people that got turned away for stickers this week already in one, if we are on day one. And given all the people that got hit last week.
How about I do a late Wednesday night?
Okay. What time would you go to on Wednesday, Carol?
Probably six or seven.
Okay. Paula, can you do something, maybe put that on the blast? Let's put it out there so everybody gets it. And then we'll Facebook it and you know, just try to make everybody aware, we're doing a late night to try to make up for it. We apologize for the inconvenience, something like that.
Carol, can you just think about the time and then confirm that tomorrow? And then I can get that out there?
Yes.
Thank you for the accommodation, Carol.
Thank you.
I mean, in their defense, we give stickers out two months before July 1st.
This isn't a lesson.
Mondays.
No one's pointing a finger at anyone and saying it's anyone's fault. We're just trying to accommodate what we know is a problem. You know, we're in a customer service business, let's be customer service oriented, so. Nobody has to mean a fault, we just try to fix what the problem is, so.
That's it for me, unless you have other particular questions.
I just have a, I have a random question about that and dog licensing. So do we, do we have a reason why we're having the stickers and the dog licensing expire the end of June?
Dog licenses are mandated by the state, Paula. Sorry for interrupt, but they expire June 30th and that's by the state of Connecticut Department of Commerce.
Right, no, thank you. I was just, I, I kind of like the idea that they both expire at the same time. Because if you go in the office, then you can do both at the same time. I was just thinking, sometimes people are away, you know, I, I know we're, we have plenty of time where people can come in early, but just thinking for customer service reasons like Adrian just said. But just thinking out loud, asking that question if the stickers and the dog licensing can be moved, but.
Well, we've had, we've had the stickers for a while and we've had the, you know, it's just that people just don't think about it until the last minute, so.
Right, right. Just a thought, okay.
Right, and, and obviously an awful lot of residents are unhappy with the fact that it's something they can't do online. You know, but, but that's always been a board of selectmen decision that, you know, it's a trade off between the number of people that are going to cheat the system, you know, and the inconvenience to the town residents. And I'm not saying I have a good solution for it, I don't. Just saying that that's, that's kind of been a decision of how we see the way we proceed.
There was an ask of residents, if there was a way, if they were, like say for instance, they're only asking for one sticker. Could they get one sticker via mail, you know, sent to them? You know, pay the same $50 fee, get one sticker via mail. And then if they want a second sticker, they have to come in, you know?
I wonder if that, is that a logistic nightmare or headache for the office?
I don't know, Carol, can you give us some feedback on that?
The only problem with that, that when the program was implemented is because the majority of people are going to put them on their own vehicle. But what about a few that give it to someone who lives out of town? That was the thought and that's why it was implemented this way where the stickers have to be put on vehicles here at town halls.
Carol, if we did it with just one sticker though, and they couldn't get the other one, they'd have to bring in, show the first ones on their car before we give them a second one and then put it on the second.
So we're going to make them drive their vehicle in if they put the sticker on in the second vehicle?
If they, if they want a second one, yes. Cause a lot of people are saying they just want one sticker and they'd be wanting to just do it through the mail. This was some, some conversation that happened on Facebook. I'm just trying to relay it.
That's a board of selectmen decision. That's what you want to do, but they just wanted to eliminate any chance of abuse of the sticker program. And that's why they're not done through the mail. And even before, when we had the sticker program and the stickers were free, they were applied down at transfer stations. So this way, you know, they, they were put on there at the transfer station and got the registration and sure.
Yeah.
And then when you mail it, there might be a lag time, you know, there, there's pros and cons to it, right? So then the person sends it in thinking they're going to get it in time for the, you know, next renewal. And, and the office is backed up, so then they, then they're going to get mad that they didn't get it until a week later. So it's
We, we really have to, we really need somebody to brainstorm this, because this has been a frustration every year. We're getting a lot of
Well, let's, let's add it to a future agenda when we're not in the thick of it. And, but it's still on, fresh on the mind, so.
We need somebody smarter than us that would come up with something, because we're, we're banging our heads on this one.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we're, we're smart enough to figure it out. We just gotta, just kind of talk it out and figure it out.
I think we can get everyone that's, you know, can look at the pictures and see the other stuff that's being done. I think that's kind of it for your report, right Eric?
That's it for me.
Okay, I see Valerie's on the call. Can we circle back to her real quick? Valerie, do you have a? Hey, how you doing? Did you by any chance, I, Eric said he sent it out, unfortunately it didn't get forwarded to us. Can you just confirm for us? So maybe we can give him permission to sign off. How did you make out with getting the ADA access from the outside and the engineering for that?
What do you mean?
For the steep ground.
You guys haven't approved applying for the steep grid yet.
At the last meeting, we said the requirement from us would be that ADA access from the outside.
No.
Actually.
If, if we do the grants, then I will have somebody come in and drop that plan for what it would look like.
Well, we're not going to prove it until we actually see that it's done. I mean, that's sort of a, putting the horse before the horse, you know, the horse before the cart there.
At this meeting, it was my assumption at this meeting, and I spoke with, I don't see Jeff on here, McGuire. It was my assumption that at this point you guys would simply be letting me know that yes, I can complete that grant for submission for August. Cause that's how
It was contingent on, on making sure that you had the, the ADA access from the exterior.
We'll make sure that goes in there if we can do the grant.
So the stuff you sent over, that Eric was not, does not include the ADA access from the exterior?
From the exterior, meaning, there was a question, I need you to be more specific. The original question was matching funds. We discussed that.
You said that you're going to try it without, because you said sometimes they do not.
Yep, and then it was whether or not you guys would have grants that were $500,000. And if they were, then the town has to be the only one that applies. If Eric's grant was less than $500,000, I was asking for the difference because
And we said that we were okay with giving you the difference, but it was contingent upon, we wanted to see that you had, you had the ADA access from the outside, because otherwise the only, if it's only available from the school side, then when school is not in session, that playground is not ADA accessible for anyone.
Well, that, if, if you're telling me I can apply for the grant for, for August 15th with that as the contingency, then I'll make sure that's in the application.
Yeah, the two contingencies were that and then the difference of what Eric is going to end up needing.
Can you tell me, can you tell me how much the grant can be? I'm sorry, I missed the beginning of the meeting, but can you tell me what the difference is so that I know when I write?
He is still getting estimates because we had, we have an abatement issue that we have to address as part of that, so.
Do you know, do you know what the potential date would be that I would, because obviously when I put the
No, I understand. Eric?
You know, I'm hoping like hell by around August 1st, I have that in both. But you know, I'm still chasing down an awful lot of suppliers. There's an awful lot of moving pieces to this.
But we're somewhere in, we're somewhere in what, the three range right now?
But there's nothing to me that says this grant is likely, we're going to be applying for more than $300,000 in funding.
So we're, we're somewhere in the $300,000 range, so.
Okay. So then in adding in additional secondary access, I'll make sure that the grant doesn't exceed 200,000.
Yeah, it, it needs to be an ADA access. That was, that was the thing.
Well, it has ADX, ADA access to the playground itself. You're asking for access from the town side.
ADA access from the town side, yeah, to be able to get up in there, so. And you know, there's a concern that there may not be enough room and able to do it where it's, where we're, we're currently looking at doing it. So, you know, that's why that, that was put in there. Just because it's, you know, it would make no sense to have a playground that's ADA accessible and then I have a way to get to it. You know, for some of that's ADA restricted.
We also do have multiple playgrounds, thank goodness, or multiple phases of the playground. So there's the upper playground, then there's the preschool side of the playground. Then there's the lower playground with the two areas there, so.
But those aren't ADA compliant though, right?
Currently, none of them are ADA compliant. So in terms of access though, I do have options. You know, for the different phases in terms of making them ADA compliant.
Yeah, that's the thing, it's just if we're, if the town as a whole is, you know, going to support that kind of money, it needs to be accessible, you know? When school's not in session, so.
Yep. Were there any other questions from earlier? I'm sorry, I logged on late.
I don't believe so. Oh, uh, not related to the playground, but we're still trying to get access to the server. So apparently it's been rebuilt now, but
Which server?
The school server that has the financial documents, the financial stuff, Phoenix and whatnot.
You're talking about the old one, the disabled one?
It's been rebuilt.
Okay, so you want the old one, Phoenix, but you want access to the schools or to the town?
We need access to the admins data and to the, and to the Phoenix data.
Well, admins you have already, that's active.
Right.
Back, yes. So what we need is, is that Tyler, apparently they have rebuilt the server on which Phoenix resides and they have Phoenix up and running.
Okay.
Can actually access it.
Okay, who needs to have that access?
Sherry does and Marina does, because they need that to complete the audit.
Okay, I'll check the status of that. For the old server for Phoenix. For, you're looking that server for the school side and the town side.
Yeah, so Phoenix as a, Phoenix as a whole resided on that server, both sides. There was no separate sides, it was just town financial data. Because you guys didn't have your own account, everything went through that, so.
And you need it for the old one, the prior to when we switched over in 2021?
Yes.
Okay. I'll check and find out what's going on with that.
Yeah, it's just been a little frustrating, because this has been a back and forth since it went down, you know? So.
Well, this is the first you guys have asked me, so I'll check on the status tomorrow and let you know.
Well, no, let's, let's back up. So I actually asked you about this the other day and you said it wasn't a school problem, it was a town problem.
No.
At the, at the meeting that we, or the, the group, at the, the group workshop that we had, I asked you about this in between.
You asked me if I knew about our server crashing?
Yes.
Our server has not crashed.
Valerie, your, your, the school's data is also on that server, Phoenix.
From 2020 to 2021, now I understand what you're asking me for, the old server data. Our current server did not crash, our current server that
If someone asks you about a server that crashed and you've only had one server crashed.
It didn't crash, it didn't crash while we were using it at the school, Adrian. So I will look into what you're talking about. I just wrote it down and I will find out exactly what's going on with it.
This, I mean, this really needs to get addressed, so.
Okay, she's gonna, she's gonna let us know. Thank you.
Was there anything else?
That's it.
So since Val is on right now, I would suggest that we switch to 9L and deal with the generator for AES also.
Okay, I think that's a great idea.
We can hop over that.
So everybody knows I received a request from the school district, asking the town to pay for the current maintenance and ongoing maintenance for the generator in the school district. And the, because in the school's estimation, since that's required for the town to maintain the status as the emergency shelter, that should be the town's requirement. And Val, you can chime in.
It was, it wasn't the general maintenance, the $480 a year that we pay for the regular checkup on it. We have always paid that, so I don't have a problem, you know, keeping that in there. What happened a couple of years ago, and then again, just this past year was there were difficulties with the generator that caused that bill to significantly exceed $480. A few years ago, I had sent to Eric in that packet, there were quite a few issues that had occurred in the range of thousands. Kinsley had to come and do some repairs to the generator this year. And at the end of the year, then we had a bill for just under 3,000. So my request was that we are absolutely okay with maintaining the general upkeep, the $480. But my request was when we do have those extra unforeseen bills that come in for things related to the generator. Because it is there simply because I can't open if I'm generator. So we do, it really doesn't do us a whole lot of good, but we do have to
Well, you can stop right there for a second. If you don't have the generator, you don't have heat, which means your pipes are going to freeze. So I would say that it actually does you quite a bit of good.
So the question then was, because the town has to have the generator in the building to maintain our status as the emergency shelter, would the town, you know, be so kind as to agree that when those larger unforeseen bills come through, if I'd be able to put those through to the town? That was my request, not for the 480. I'm perfectly okay with keeping that, it's these other ones when they come through.
And Val, you might, you might have said this, so I'm trying to absorb all this. So what, what was the situation where it was that made it a higher bill? Was it something that malfunctioned?
Yeah, there was a malfunction and a repair that had to take place and it came in at just, the 2,900, I think it came in at just under 3,000. And I just, I didn't have that in the budget, along with some of the other things that I And I just, I didn't have that in the budget, um along with some of the other things that had happened this year, it just wasn't there. Um, and so that's why I, you know, had mentioned it to Eric and to McGuire, and I put a letter together, just in hopes that when that a- occurs, like in this case, um, the town would help us out with that.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm just gonna say from a, from a maintenance standpoint, those things happen. Um, it's no different than when you have unexpected things on your air conditioning, right? And on your, you know, you had some issues with the water heater, those things come up. So, we have them on the town side as well, you know, that happens on a regular basis. Ours usually bigger, like bridges, but, you know, but we do have them, so. I personally, you know.
I, my, my question, and I do know that it was supported by um Jeff McGuire, which is why I sent the letter. But um, you know, I, I would like to just remind you guys that when it does happen on a town side, sometimes you are able to go back to the Board of Selectmen, I mean, the Board of Finance, and ask for an additional allocation, and the school being funded once a year, we, we don't have that ability to keep coming back when we have these things, and so we are at a loss um at the town, at the school side, um because we don't get to come back and ask for the overages, because we're funded once a year, so. I'm just simply asking um for these, you know, unforeseen things, for these things that come up, um, you know, related to the generator, I'm not asking for everything else, I'm asking for related to the generator. Um, if, if it's something that the town could take care of.
Okay, well, can we, can we talk about a little more next month when, when Mr. McGuire is on the call? And see what his thoughts were, because he, he got the letter direct, um. Eric did, okay. Adrian and Scott and Jeff, what, what are your thoughts?
I just remember when I was on the Board of Finance, I think the school came back once or twice with some requests for some additional funding, so.
Yeah, and generally, it's taken out of the non-lapsing account, which you.
Yeah, so, I mean, Garry, if you have any issues or it's something like this that comes up, I mean, you can easily go to the Board of Finance and just ask for those funds. I don't see any reason why they wouldn't approve something like that, that's pretty much out of our, it's pretty much out of our hands.
And that's sort of.
The board of finance decision.
Right, that's sort of the point of the non-lapsing account, is that you have access to funds if you need it for these unexpend, unexpected things.
Um, then I also will ask the um Board of Selectmen to um add to next month's meeting. Um, the uh idea of the revenue that has come in from Cool from two thousand eighteen until two thousand twenty two, uh that money, that check for um maintenance and repairs and general, I think it's under, you know, uh like rent. Um, has been sent to the town from two thousand eighteen until now. Um, and it's a few thousand dollars a year, but that's been given to the town, we have not seen that money up until this point. Um, and I haven't seen it.
Cool's a nonprofit, they balance their own, Cool is a nonprofit, they balance their own books.
Um, but the check's been going to the town um since twenty eighteen. Um, as it, that, that's where the, the check's been going for the rental of the school. Um, and so I would ask that that revenue source be considered at the next meeting as well.
You would want to bring that up with the Board of Finance again.
So Adrian, that is on the agenda, that's item nine J, cool status rent checks. And, and honestly, that, that's been occurring since long before I was the town administrator. But it does make sense to me if it occurs within the school and they deal with the added maintenance costs, et cetera, with the cool program there, that they should be getting the rent checks, but I don't know why it was set up the way it was set up.
That's not the Board of Selectmen's purview, that's the Board of Finances, and again, I don't as far as I know, so you're saying there's a check that's cut for the usage of the school?
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I would talk to the Board of Finance, put it before them.
Then, I, I certainly will send that to the Board of Finance, because that would be where I would love to be able to take out the, the current bill that is three thousand dollars for Kinsley.
I don't, I'm, just to be clear, I don't think you're gonna get back funds, because I don't know that the Board of Selectmen would allow you to go back and collect, because those okay, those accounts and years are already closed out, so, you know, you can't go back to twenty eighteen.
I do have to tell you, I'm a little disappointed then, because of these revenue sources have been coming in, and on the one hand, I'm being told that money went to the town, that's kind of too bad, but then I'm asking.
Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, are already, are already, are already closed years. We certainly can't go back and rework a budget that's already been audited, so.
Well, there's been checks since January of this year as well, so perhaps I could talk to the Board of, of Finance on that as well.
Again, yeah, but you're not gonna be able to go back to twenty eighteen, certainly anything going forward, I don't have any objection to personally, but to go back to previous years, they're already audited and closed, it's not gonna happen, you know.
Well.
So, I wasn't thinking that we were gonna reach back, but I do think it would be appropriate for the cool rent checks that we received in the twenty one, twenty two fiscal year, and for the checks going forward to be deposited with the school, not with the town.
Yeah, again, I don't, I don't have any issue with that, but you know, I think also too, the question becomes, if that check was coming in, where was, I don't, I don't remember seeing that in any budget item as a source of revenue, you know? So, that's another, I guess, a question for the Finance Department, as we're working through the accounts, because it certainly hasn't popped up.
It goes into the rentals revenue line item, which should be on the revenue report.
Okay.
Is it late, is it clearly labeled cool rental, or maybe that's why?
No, it's, it's just like general rentals, I think it's titled as.
Okay.
Right, because that fund includes rentals from other things, other than just the school.
Yeah.
So I think it's great that you found this and brought to the attention, and we certainly, I don't think have an issue with it going forward, and talked to Board of Finance about seeing if it can, they can adjust you for January till now.
Okay, uh we're inside with the Board of Finance.
Thank you. Val, do you have anything else?
No, that was it.
We still don't have Scott on, has anyone else heard from Scott, if he's gonna hop on or not?
He's, he's been on, he's been.
Where is he?
I don't know, I don't know what kind of view you got on your Zoom there.
I'm here, Adrian.
Oh, okay, sorry, I wasn't seeing you, buddy, just making sure you got your, okay.
Fine, thank you.
Um, all right, so we hopped around a little bit. Admin's report is done, do we want to hop over to Carol Lee and get her out of the way so she can head home?
I concur, and that would also work, because we got Dennis on the line also.
All right, perfect, Carol?
I have here with me George, Knox, Don Deadly, and Karen Liddell, so there are four here, Patty is not feeling well, so she wasn't able to join.
Can I make a s- a suggestion and have Dennis do a small presentation?
Certainly.
Okay, if, if, if that's okay with the chairman, uh, uh Adrian, I'd like to, uh, I, 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 I was the one that asked to have this on the agenda for uh this meeting, because we are, you know, facing a, a time strictures, we have to get this on the um ballot for November eighth, if we wanna go forward with it. A lot of work has been done on it by the Commission, and also by the Board of Selectmen, and uh myself and, and Carol Lee uh as well, and um, you know, we need to move forward on it, so we're at the stage of the process now, where um the Commission has filed its draft report. The Board of Selectmen met on February twenty, I'm sorry, not February twenty sixth, June twenty sixth, and I ma- made some, suggested some changes to that report. And now we're at the point where the um uh Commission, Commissioners and the Board of Selectmen are supposed to meet, and the, at the, with the result being that the Commission will then vote on what to do with the suggestions made by the um uh Board of Selectmen at the June twenty sixth meeting. Now, I've gone, I've, we, we've prepared a document that's um in the packet. It's a three-page document, it's, it's the pages three, four, and five of the packet. And that, that includes everything that uh is up to date, including the original draft report and the amendments made by the Board of Selectmen, as well as um, well, that's where we're at right now. And um, you know, if you recall, on the twenty sixth of June, what the Board of Selectmen did was make uh several amendments to some of the, some of the um provisions, and based on what I'm hearing, um, the uh Charter Revision Commission probably does not have an issue with a lot of those changes, there was a change suggested by Jeff Murray, a very good change to the uh section on the um qualifications for the town um administrator. Jeff, I actually found some language in an ad I found in the paper that was very similar to what you, what you stated, Jeff, and I, and I put it right into the, the proposal. And I don't think anybody has a problem with that, I don't think anybody had a problem with us cutting out um the uh police services out of the uh long list of um other, other uh public officials that were going to be treated differently under the recommendation of the Charter Revision Commission as uh pretty much agreed with by the Board of Selectmen. So there's, there aren't too many changes except for one. The one major change is the fact that the Board of Selectmen suggested that the town meeting, the budget town meeting no longer include a vote on the budget. That's a big deal, in fact, it's such a big deal that um they had originally, the Board of uh, I'm sorry, the Charter Revision Commission originally had set up a bunch of uh for, in fact, uh possible ballot questions, based on the work that had been done up to a certain point. And thi- this, one change that uh you of the Board of Selectmen recommended at the last meeting uh would necessitate another ballot question. That would be changing the board, changing the town meeting to something that is just a formality. That would be a town meeting whereby the Board of Finance would report uh to the public on the budget, but no vote would be taken, and you'd go straight to referendum. From, from what I understand, that is an issue that um the Charter Revision Commission probably is the only issue that is uh, where there are differences of opinion between the Charter Revision Commission and the Board of Selectmen. I'm trying to, I'm trying to save time here, that's why I'm telling you this, this is what I'm, my understanding is. And uh probably, um, you know, unless there's, unless there's another issue, uh, and, and that would be the Charter Revision Commission people, because anything you've agreed on up to now, for example, the bifurcation of the budgets, that's already done, that's, you, you've agreed on that now, that you're locked into that. That's the way the process works, you're only, you're only here to discuss where you have differences. And the only difference that's major, in my view, is that, you know, provision that would say your town meeting is simply going to be a get-together without any voting. So that, I'll leave you with that, and Carol, uh, you're here with three members of the um Commission, so you have a quorum. That's for uh, you're a five-member group, you have a quorum, uh easily, you have four. And there's a quorum here of the Board of Selectmen, you have four selectmen. Uh, but the first vote would have to be taken by the Charter Revision Commission uh to uh either approve or disapprove the changes made by the Board of Selectmen. And then after that, if there's agreement, uh the Board of Selectmen could vote to approve the entire package. And then, in the, there's another agenda item on later in the agenda, under new business, you could consider then, if, if, if there's an agreement, or, or if there's final action, you could consider the um, the ballot questions, and then, if that, if that works, we'd be all done with this, and we could send, and, and, and Carol Lee and her role as town clerk could send this off to uh the Secretary of State's office, get it on the ballot for November eighth, and you wouldn't have to deal with it again. I noticed uh by listening to the meeting at uh so far, that, you know, you're deferring several, you know, you're having a long meeting tonight with a lot of really important issues, and you're already deferring some of these issues of necessity to the next meeting. Well, in my view, if we don't finish this tonight, you're probably gonna need to have a special meeting in the interim, in order, if you want to make the deadline.
I didn't, I don't see, I don't see in the packet, and forgive me if I'm missing it, but I don't see a list of the proposed questions.
Yeah, that's in the packet further on down, the proposed questions, that's a, that's a secondary item, you first have to deal with the um the differences between um their, their original proposal and the changes you made on the twenty sixth of June, and from what I understand, the only, the only difference there is, is the uh item on the town meeting. But that's, that's what we're dealing with now, Adrian, uh with all due respect, it's, it's items uh I think three, pages three, four, and five of the packet, I believe.
I found the others, it jumps to the next, the set of questions is at eighteen, starts at eighteen.
Yeah, that, that's not on the agenda for this particular item, that, that is on the id- agenda under uh new business, I mean, we can go right into that if we can, we can finish this up.
That makes.
I, 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 that's all I have, unless you have questions, I just wanted to set the, set the stage, through a discussion, try to save time.
I have a question.
Hi, Carol.
So Dennis, we should read like section zero, seven zero one C qualifications and compensation, read the new wording for that section, and then the four of us vote on that, is that correct?
Well, what you could do is if you uh, if you're in agreement with the changes that were made by the um by the uh Board of Selectmen on June twenty sixth, but for the changes that were made to the town meeting, uh which I consider to be a big change, uh you could vote on all of them together and say you, say that you are approving those changes except for uh the change uh on the uh town meeting, which you would like to discuss with the Board of Selectmen now.
Okay.
Do it that way, or you could go over each one individually, but that's, that's, that's up, that's totally up to you, it's not up to me.
Three questions. Okay, so uh, I just pulled all of the members, we would like to do it where we have all three sections, so section seven zero one C qualifications and compensation of the town administrator, section seven zero one general, and section seven zero two of. Sorry, let me back up, so.
Seven oh one, seven oh two.
Right, so all in favor of approving the changes recommended by the Board of Selectmen to section seven zero one C qualifications compensation, section seven zero one general, and section seven zero two of the charter. Say aye, aye, so we had unanimous votes to accept those three sections with the revisions proposed by the Board of Selectmen. Now, discussion with section eight zero three of the annual town budget meeting and referendum, and making a major change to the only forum where taxpayers and electors of the town of Andover can voice their opinion and remove items that they don't agree with. I know that we've discussed and will take a motion as to who is in all of those opposed to the proposed section eight zero three provision. Say aye, aye.
Well.
Unanimous.
Excuse me, Carol.
Hey.
Now's the time.
Exactly.
Now's the time for you, you're getting ahead of yourself, now is the time for you to discuss that with the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, to discuss it, okay, all right.
You need to confer.
Okay, all right, so.
And you've got four members of the Commission.
Okay. So, we do, so I did lead into that um we're opposed because it is the only forum where taxpayers, the electors, and voice their opinion and remove items from the budget. Um, so I'm gonna turn it over to Don, he would also like to say something.
Yes, uh I would like to know what the motivation is for this new change, and which ones, which of you, ones that are here this evening, are in favor of eliminating town budget meeting, where we have a chance to not only have public comments, but also make motions to the budget as. town budget meeting where we have a chance to not only have public comments, but also make motions to the budget as we said. Where did this come from?
Anyone else wanna chime in or? Um, so this came up, if, if you had watched the last Board of Selectmen meeting, there was some back and forth discussion on some of the adjustments that we were looking at. And one of the things that of concern is that as a, as a town, we tend to get in this round robin um, at these budget meetings, you know? And part of the problem is it's such a small representation of the town. Um, and in the past, even when we've had issues that cleared that meeting, if it was really a town issue, for instance, I'll, I'll go back and point out the, um, back when we talked about the trooper removal when I was on the Board of Finance, you know, the, the budget got killed because of that. So it, it still was addressed at a town level, even though it didn't get addressed directly, you know, at, at that budget meeting. But the concern is that generally you're talking about, you know, give or take, you know, a hundred and twenty people, a hundred and fifty people making a decision that might affect the whole town. Well, it shouldn't say might, it does affect the whole town. And, you know, the concern, we get a lot of feedback from the seniors that the budget meeting is too late, from the parents that it's a problem for them because of the timing. Um, you know, s- some of our seniors don't wanna be driving at night. It's a little bit of a problem for them. Um, you know, the parents are putting kids to bed. So the, the meeting itself is, is not all that well attended. Um, and so there's a concern that a small group is having maybe a little bit too much of a sway on the budget, whether it's, and it can be from the parent side, it can also be from the, you know, from the resident side. It can be from, you know, from, you know, outliers. So allowing the whole town to have a say in the budget before we start taking it apart, I think was, was, was part of that. You know, um, we have these, we have, you know, give or take five meetings for each board at the very least. There is certainly plenty of time for public comment prior to the town meeting. And then at the town meeting, we were very, very poorly attended, unfortunately. So that was, that was some of the background and concern, you know?
Cool. You're, you're talking about comments only. I mean, I've been going to town meetings. I've lived here for thirty years. I have watched, and I have watched changes in that budget take place at town meetings. Now, some of the town meetings, when there was a controversial item going on or extra spending, I've seen a hundred and fifty people who are well versed what's going on in the town budget at that point, and these people care. So I think to take away their voice, whether it be seniors or people in the middle, or the, or the people, um, or that, I think is a disservice to this town. And I'm embarrassed. Okay, and I'm really upset that, that people, okay, will take it upon yourself that line item from, from town voters. Okay, it's, it's literally.
Well, I mean, to be, to be clear, Don, we're not asking you to remove it. We're asking you to give the townsfolk a chance to decide if it's still a good form of government for them.
So where, where is the town, where the town voters that wanna go to these meetings, where do they get an opportunity to make a motion to reduce the budget? You move it.
But, but Don, you're, you're saying we're, you know, a small group is making a decision now. That what you're, what you're, what you're, what you're doing as a charter commission is you're moving this forward for the whole town to take a vote on it. So if, if you move this forward, it doesn't change anything. It'll, except that it allows the town as a whole during a, a, a governor's race, so you're gonna get a good turnout. You're allowing the town as a whole to decide if that town meeting is still the right form of government for them. That's all you're doing. You're allowing them to make the decision. They'll decide.
For the ballot questions to be, does the town voters, citizens and taxpayers of Andover wanna eliminate the town budget meeting, so removing their ability to remove line items from the budget? That's, you put that on there? Any other questions?
You're eliminating the meeting completely, that's the question, right? And, and, or the vote at the meeting. I mean, if you go back and look at it, we, there's not a lot taken out of those budgets. The issue really is more that it becomes a contention.
Town budget meetings are, are the, uh, mainstay of this town, okay?
Well, they were, they were mainstay fifty, if we're gonna, we're gonna have an honest conversation about, they were mainstay fifty years ago, that they're, they're, they're so poorly attended now, it's frustrating. You know, and, and to be honest, Don.
This year, I didn't see poorly attended. I saw, I saw, I saw a full auditorium on a bunch of these meetings from both the, uh, people who supported the, the, uh, increased spending and the people that did. I think you're, I think you're absolutely correct there.
So.
I'd be a little disagree with that.
I would, I would wholeheartedly say that, uh, best case scenario, you had, what, a hundred and seventy people at a meeting?
Okay.
Right?
Okay. But is that, is that a bad number? I think that's a pretty, I think it's a pretty impressive number of people that did their homework. Okay, had enough knowledge to show up at these meetings and.
It's, it's five percent.
Stand in front of the microphone and, and tell the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen, and people who agree or disagree with them.
Don, it's five percent. It's five percent. It's five percent.
Cannot, you should not stifle, okay, free speech.
Okay, guys, point of order here, point of order.
It's five percent of registered voters.
Point of order, guys, come on. Um, I think, I think, Don, what our concerns are is that, you know, usually at the town meetings, when it gets sent to referendum, it doesn't really reflect the, the, the flavor of the voters. And it may get voted to get sent to referendum and then it fails. And then we come back to the town meeting. Like last year, we went back and forth, what was it, four times?
Right.
You know, so.
When the Board of Eds, when the Board of Eds used to spend money and they, and they, they stacked the deck, that, that's what happened.
Well, that could, it could happen with a fire, but Don, it could happen with a fire truck. It could be happening with anything.
It, it can, it can happen. It's part of the process, okay? We, we, I don't know, understand why you're trying to like move the process. It's not broken. It doesn't need to be fixed.
Yeah, I know, and I know we can remove, but, I mean, I don't remember the last time we've had something voted to remove and actually.
And actually pass.
Yes.
All right, so it becomes, it becomes a bone of contention for everybody. And again, you're, you're allowing five percent of the, of the voting pop, public to make a decision.
Decide what goes, decide what goes to referendum, which we would rather, we would rather have people, we would rather have people involved in the budget process with the Board of Finance and actually with crafting the budget and offering their opinions of public speak, so we could craft something that's palatable to the public at large.
All you can do with a Board of Finance meeting is test, make a comment. You, you have no, there's no, there's no way you can make a motion to reduce a line item.
But those, but those motions.
This is the only vehicle where you can stand in front of your, your town and your boards and reduce a line item. Whether you fail or not, you, you have that ability to have that voice.
Okay, I just wanna put out there that on referendums, we only have a few hundred people show up to vote on the budget. So when you're talking about percentages, we may have about twenty percent of the people come out to vote at referendum. But anyway, rather than let this go on, we did vote, cause it's, it's not gonna be productive. So as a commission, we are not in favor of removing that. So if, take that vote. Dennis, I see your hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Carol, if you, you know, you, you can take a, you have to take a vote. The commission has to vote on, on that item. If you're, if you're through discussing it, but just let me say this. Then the Board of Selectmen votes and the Board of Selectmen has the final say on that item. Just wanted to say that.
Right, they can overrule and put that onto the ballot, but we just feel also that because this was so last minute, maybe if it was given it, given to us initially, when we were first given our charges or the charter review, um, you know, we would have looked at things, looked at the reasons, but it was given to us at a meeting last week. So we've reviewed it and again, we'll take the vote. You know, I'll call the vote here, but I just want you to know again, that where it was just thrown out here last minute rather than in the beginning with all of our charges.
Carol, to be, to, so you understand, this was not something that, this literally came out of an organic discussion on the last.
No, no, I understand, but again.
It wasn't something we thought about until that meeting.
Right.
And, and that, it, it, Agent's comments, we're one of the only towns that really does this town meeting anymore. I mean, a lot of towns just, you know, put the budget together and go to referendum. And some towns don't even have a referendum. It's just decided by the Board of, you know, the Town Council.
Well, that's, that's, that's a great idea. Yeah, sure. Why don't we just follow everybody else?
Well, no, no.
And you can take away the voice of their, of the officials, the taxpayers. Look, uh, Scott, say that. I'm just pointing here to say. I didn't say that, I said that.
Well, when you're through discussing it, Carol, you can take a vote, but you know, there are a couple of board members who, uh, haven't chimed in yet. They may not want to. I don't wanna put pressure on anybody, but you know, it's supposed to be a discussion and, you know, it may be that we're not gonna get anywhere with the discussion. I don't know, but that's, that's what, you know, that's the way it's supposed to work.
Dennis, Dennis, in your experience, have you, um, I mean, what, what, what way are towns going with this? Are they going just to a referendum or they still have a town meeting?
Well, the, 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 there's so many different ways of doing it, uh, Jeff. And, uh, you know, like in, in Wyndham, for example, it's my best example. We have, uh, a town meeting, which is, there's no vote taken. It just goes straight to referendum. And, um, you know, a lot of people don't, you know, feel it's not really worth it to have that meeting. Just go straight to referendum. But don't forget, Wyndham is, you know, we have about twelve thousand voters. You, you have nowhere near that here.
Right, but then you, then you have larger towns like East Windsor that still does it this way. As a matter of fact, after the third failed referendum, their charter reads that the budget is reverted to the prior year's budget with a two percent cap. So there are other towns that still do this. And again, if this is something that you wanna look at, there's nothing that prohibits the Board of Selectmen from appointing another Charter Revision Commission to look at this and put this on the next ballot, if you want it on the municipal election in May of twenty-three. But the thing is, just, and I am using last minute again, and I'm not accusing or anything like that, but this was just put out. I know it was just after discussion. However, we're not comfortable with this and you know, I would, I would like to take the vote on this of the commission as to what our recommendations, unless you have further.
I'm, I've got a question. Yep, I've got a question. So if we, if the Board of Selectmen had put this out there when you were first looking into things and gave you time, what, what's the difference between a week? What would you have done? You'd done a little.
So what we would have done is research more towns to see how many towns still do it this way and towns that do it this way. Like I told you, one that I know, obviously, Swinster, the way that they do it, and then revert to the prior years, and it's defeated three times with a two percent increase. We haven't had time to really look at any other towns to see what their process is with the bifurcation. We had an opportunity to do research, we had an opportunity to look at towns that do this. We have an opportunity to look at Ebron's bifurcation report. With this one here, we had no time really to do any in-depth research. And plus two last minute, to be honest with you, I don't know if other taxpayers and electors of Andover will look at it like, why, why was it, and I understand what you're saying, but I don't know how that's gonna be viewed.
Well, here's, here's a question, Carol Lee. Isn't their opinion or how they view it, isn't that expressed on voting on that individual question? It's, it's not gonna be wrapped in as a package of charter changes. This would be an individual question that every, every elector, every taxpayer in this town that has a vote would be able to have their say on the question if it's on the ballot. Isn't that where they get a chance to have a say?
Okay, you're correct. However, we were asked at one of our Charter Revision Commission meetings if we did our due diligence in researching prior to making recommendations as far as the bifurcation on the budget. We could say yes. We can't say yes on this. So I do see that as a problem. I honestly could not tell anyone, but yes, we did our due diligence and we are recommending this in good faith to the people of the town, the electors and taxpayers of the town.
This sounds shady to me.
And also.
I'll use that word. I, I'd like to know, are any of the four of you opposed to this? Any of the four of yous out there? Colin, Murray, Kane.
Opposed to what, Don?
To be honest, Don, it's not our, it's not our place to say. It's our, it's our.
So, so individuals can stand up, make a comment and make a motion to reduce a line item on the town budget.
Don, I, I, I think you'll, I think you guys need to make your, take your vote and then we'll take ours. I think that's the appropriate way to.
And I have one other question for Dennis. Now Dennis, where this is something that will affect taxpayers, not electors and residents. Is this a question that a taxpayer would have to be allowed to vote on?
No, no, it isn't, Carol. The, uh,
Okay.
The Charter Revision Statute, uh, only allows, uh, electors. Residents of the town, of course, to vote on, on, on the charter. Just elect. Uh, out of town people cannot vote.
Okay, all right. So is, are the Board of Selectmen, are you set with your discussion or any additional questions for us?
My opinion is to allow the uh, Charter Revision Commission to go forward with the things that we've approved this evening.
Well, let, they need to take their vote and then we'll, we'll have our discussion.
I'm just, everybody else is talking about it, so I'm, so am I.
But there's, they need to take a vote, so then we can actually have our discussion.
Right, but Scott wants to give us his opinion on that.
Let, let him share, let him share his thoughts. Go ahead, Scott.
Um, I think that they should be able to go forward with what they've already been approved. That's what they're tasked with. They should be able to go forward with what they approved. And maybe the question of removing the town meeting should be on a question for the town voters to ask if they'd like to remove the town meeting. And if they do, then a, a future Charter Revision Commission can.
It's a fair way.
Look into that.
So, so a non-binding question, Scott?
And then, and let them go forward with what they worked on and have a future question or just put it in the, uh, November election, if you'd like to see the.
All right, so, so let's let, let's let them take their vote and then we'll adjust that. So we can move forward here, cause we're, we're getting in a circle.
Yeah, I think it's, unless, unless somebody else has something to, uh, to say that hasn't already been said, um, you know, my, I would recommend that the, um, Charter Revision Commission, uh, vote on this item, the item of being the, you know, the question of whether the town meeting should be changed so that no votes are taken at the town meeting. So I, I would recommend, Carol, that you take your vote. And then the Board of Selectmen can discuss it among themselves in public right after this, and then they can decide to vote the entire package.
All right, very good. Hey, uh, all of those in favor of changing section eight, zero, three, the annual town budget meeting and referendum as proposed by the Board of Selectmen, say aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so there are four against.
Now, quite, can I ask a question? Eight oh three, is eight oh three G separate from that?
Eight oh three, it's all of eight oh three. So it's eight oh three, A, B, C, and D.
Um, parts of D, there's a part of D also that is already been agreed upon, and that's the bifurcation.
And so what I'm asking about is.
I'm sorry, yes. The following shall be inserted into the charter as a new of section eight, zero, three, G.
G, and also, also the last part of D, uh, Carol, that's already, uh, in blue, if you have color.
Right.
That's the bifurcation. That's already in.
Right, but just saying section eight, zero, three, the annual town budget meeting and referendum changes. Um, which.
Annual town budget meeting, leave it, leave it to that. That's really what you're voting on.
Right, and that's what we did just vote on, and we voted against.
Yes, I think that's clear. I just wanna make sure it's clear in the record. Yes, I think that's clear. I just want to make sure it's clear in the record. Because we are making a record for this process as, uh, you know, it's, it's detailed and.
Right.
Right.
Correctly, and that's why, that's why I'm here.
Right, so what we, so we need to do is take a vote on whether we accept everything as presented to us by the Board of, by the Charter Commission, or if we want to, um, put the changes through that we agreed to last time, um, or come to some middle ground.
Uh, hold, hold. The only issue really that you need, you need to vote on the, um, issue that we just discussed. But the other issues are all, uh, agreed upon already. So there's no, they're not in play anymore.
All right, so we don't have to take a vote to move them, we don't have to take a vote to move them forward?
You have to, you do have to take a vote to move them forward, but it should.
That was my point.
It should be a formality.
I understand, but we still have to take the vote.
You're right, you, you do, you have the final vote, you're right.
Okay, so.
Move to the questions if, if you, after you vote.
My, my point was if we clear the questions up first, we can, if we clear up these other issues first, we can take one final vote and then go to questions.
Yeah, yeah, you have to do this first before you go to the questions. Right, after you finish this, the questions will be easy.
Right, okay, so.
It should be.
Um, Scott, you put forward an idea, Paula, Jeff, discussion. Your own thoughts on this?
Uh, I, I, I wasn't on the last meeting when you all had the discussion. So I'm just, I'm going off of meeting minutes and hearing tonight and watching the meeting back. Um, I like, I like Scott's thought. I understand um, your thoughts from the previous meeting. But I kind of feel like we say a lot of times, you know, let's, let's let the public be heard and, and give them a chance to vote on it. So that's my thought.
Mine too. Jeff Murray?
Well, you know, I, I, I thought the last meeting, we did have a good, you know, discussion about this and it made, made some good points. But to Carol and Don's point, um, we kind of threw this into them at the eleventh hour.
Yep.
So maybe, you know, maybe we are rushing a little bit, maybe we need to just back the, the truck up a little bit and, you know, maybe research this a little bit more and make sure that we're making a sound decision here. So I said, if this was a month ago and we gave them a month to look at it, I would be more, if we were going to make a vote to overrule their decision, I would be more comfortable with that. But like I said, we made this last minute decision. They didn't really have a lot of time to look at it. And I, I'm kind of siding with Scott with the non-binding question.
I, I agree. I, I think my only concern with the non-binding question is we have to figure out how to have it on the ballot so that it's not. I don't want it to be like we do the, we do the charter questions and then have it be like right after it.
Or maybe we just don't do it at all. We just do this vote and then we attack this at a certain later date with more, with more.
I would just like to have it, maybe we have it on a separate ballot, you know?
It's going to be confusing if we put that as a question.
Right, I think we need to put it somewhere else. Dennis, you're waving?
Yeah, I, I'm really not sure that you can do a non-binding question on a, on a gubernatorial ballot of, on charter revision. I've never seen that done before. It's not to say you can't do it, but it's not been done before as far as I know. And I've, I've been involved with lots of charter revisions, so you know, it's, uh, to me, it would be, uh, unusual to have a non-binding question on with a bunch of binding questions.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We, we don't, I think our concern is that we don't want to put it on this, in the same space.
Could be.
But I think.
Be confusing, definitely be confusing.
Yeah. I, I, I can't say for sure, um, one way or the other, uh, I, I don't know, I'd have to probably talk to the Secretary of State's office.
Well, I, I don't think we want to, I think our point is instead of having it listed with the charter questions, we'd like to have it separately, maybe on a separate piece of paper, even that we do a hand tally later if we need to, you know?
Yeah, or do it at a, at another time, um, by itself.
Well, I mean, I think if you're going to do it, we try to do it where we're going to get the most contact. You know?
Right.
And if we do it on this one, and, and the town says yes, then we move forward and try to get a Charter Revision Commission ready for the presidential, right? And if they say no, then we don't have to worry about it, but at least we've given them a chance to have their say.
What you could do is you could vote to approve the package that the, um, Charter Revision Commission has put together, except for that one item that you, um, you want, uh, me to, um, put on the ballot if, if it's possible to put it on the ballot as a, as a non-binding question.
Yeah, okay.
I would, I would support that.
If not possible, we won't do it. We have to.
Scott, are you okay with that? If we can figure out a way to put it on separately?
Certainly, that, you know, we, we made huge progress with this. If we get that, this passed through.
Yeah, I, I'm, I give deference to Carol Lee with the idea that they didn't have enough time to, they don't feel like they can make a recommendation, so.
And Adrian, they were, they were unanimously opposed, so we have to take that into consideration.
Yeah, I, yeah, I know, but I think the reasoning is important as well, and her reasoning is that she can't make a recommendation, so like, therefore they don't want to do it. And, and I think that's fair, so. All right, so I will make a motion that.
Before you start, just let me say this. You need, you need to vote of a majority of the total membership of the commission to do whatever you do. So you need three votes. You need three votes to do whatever you're going to do.
Well, I don't know what those are, because we haven't called the vote yet.
No, no, but, but I'm just telling you in advance that you need, you need three votes to pass anything.
Well, there's only four of us here, so I.
I know, I know.
Adrian, he's just putting it out there, okay?
Putting it out there, yeah, that's all. I, I have no axe to grind. My only axe to grind, folks, is to try to get this on the ballot, because that's.
Let's see if we can take a vote and get you your three or get the three, okay, so.
Yeah, you do it, okay.
Round one.
Playing it out for you.
Round one, uh.
Thanks, Paul.
So my motion would be that we accept the recommendations of the Charter Commission um, to move forward, the, uh, uh, approved, the approved sections um, to a, to a ballot referendum.
I second that. That's done.
Okay. All in favor or discuss, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. I would also make a motion that we explore with the registered voters and the town clerk, whether we can put an advisory question on the ballot as well to ask if the town meeting should still be the, um, the preferred budget method. Or if we should eliminate the town meeting and go straight to referendum from Board of Finance.
I'll second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Are we, are we, okay, Dennis, can we go to questions now?
I think you should go to the questions now, yes, and, and then, uh, I'm going to take a, I think I'm going to leave the meeting because I've had a long day and you're doing very well. I'm impressed.
Dennis, I'm disappointed in you only in the sense that normally we get like ten or eleven out of you, so I'm worried that you're.
Sometimes after midnight.
Okay, we're going to call you back in, we're going to call you back in an hour, keep you.
You know what, I'm, just, just because you, you want me to, I can tell, I'm going to stick around. I do, I do enjoy these meetings. Believe me, I wouldn't be here if I didn't.
All right, uh.
Andrea, just one more thing, just thanks to the Charter Revision Commission for all their hard work.
Well, we're not done with them, we're, we're still talking to them.
Well.
I was going to thank them at the end, we still have to do.
Sorry.
You're done with them.
I thought we already had their vote.
I thought we had to do questions with them.
They're done, they're done, they don't.
They're done, they're done.
They're not part of the questions?
No.
Oh.
Only the Board of Selectmen votes on the questions.
Just a quick thank you to everybody for their participation.
Carol Lee, Don, all of you guys, thank you so much, and girls, um, thank you for your time and your diligence.
Yes, thank, thank you very much, Carol, Don, everyone, I, I can't remember everyone's name, but.
George.
George, right?
Karen.
Thank you guys, a job well done.
And, and listen, can, candidly to all of you, although we may disagree on some of these things back and forth, it's important to have dissension and to have pushback and to have these conversations. If we don't have them, then, then nothing might happen. So thank you for your diligence and, you know, we appreciate the conversation, okay?
We do too, thank you very much. All right, bye-bye.
Good night.
Bye.
Okay, questions, Dennis?
Okay.
Who has those?
Yeah, they're on the, uh.
They're on the packet?
They're in the packet.
Eighteen.
All right, eighteen was the.
Eighteen is alternative what, B? Um, yeah, you should pass alternative B, those questions. And, um, and then set apart question one on alternative A, which pertains to the, um, the annual town budget meeting. So if you, if you, uh, if you pass alternative B, and those questions are, were carefully drawn, drafted to some extent by me, approved, uh, early on by the, uh, Charter Commission, I think unanimously. And, uh, I have, I have massaged them a little bit to, uh, reflect what happened on June twenty-sixth. And, um, I've been doing this for years for other referendums and trust me, folks, they're good. Well, I would recommend alternative D and then have another well, add, uh, item one of alternative A about the town meeting, if it can be done in a non-binding way. So we'll have to see that. Carol and I will work together on that to, uh, determine whether it's okay, uh, to do that.
Okay.
I guess we can just approve that, Adrian, and then.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just reading it because I didn't have a chance to get, to read it.
Oh, you're reading it?
And allow Dennis and, uh, Carol to go over the questions and, uh, possibly add that question.
Yeah, i- i- if, if it's, if it's legal.
Right.
The, the, the non-binding question that you recommended, Scott.
Yeah.
You made the first recommendation as to that, I believe.
I, I wish, I wished four was a little less wordy, I'm going to be very honest.
You have to, it has to be a little bit wordy because, um, you know, the voters, this is what the voter is going to see, and they have to know what they're voting on. That's a big change that you.
No, I, I also don't like the wording where it says, shall the town charter be amended to increase Board of Selectmen authority? You know?
Well, it does because it, it requires only a, a three, a vote of three of you to, um, to hire or dismiss if, unless there's a union situation. Um, for example, myself. Uh, you can, you can, you can, uh, you can dismiss somebody on a, on a vote of just three, three members instead of four. So it gives you increased authority.
Let's test that. I make a motion that we remove Dennis O'Brien now.
No, hey. Come on, I need the, I need the money, you got all the money.
I know, I know. All right, um. Yeah, I mean, I, I understand, it's just the wordiness, that's a mouthful. You know?
Well, I'm a lawyer, that's what we do.
What is the, what is the guidelines for us if we approve these? Is there a way that we can put this out with an explanation? Below them, so.
You can put out explanatory, uh, explanatory statements that have to be approved by the town attorney.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, I, I'm, I'm in favor of, I, I would make a motion to approve alternative B, which this is, um, Charter Vision Draft Ballot Questions. Um, with it, with the caveat that we, um, we put together an explanation of statement for each of them to be put out as part of the, uh, as part of the mailing.
Yeah, I think. Was that a motion? Did you make a motion?
Yes, as a motion.
I'll second.
Discussion. Scott, Jeff?
Good idea.
Yeah, I, I think you need to because if somebody hasn't been sitting in.
No, they're, especially that last one.
They're going to be lost.
Yeah, okay, so.
What about this? If they don't read the mailing, can it, can explanation be at the time when they're voting? Can be something? Okay.
They can put it on poster boards at the, you know, they, they do that all the time. But it's got to be, you're not going to get that. Paul, you're not going to get that done like, um, that's going to take a little time because that has to be approved by, it has to be, uh, well, writs theoretically written by you and approved by me.
All right.
But I will actually draft it, uh, give it to you.
I will, I will amend, I will amend my motion to say that we'll put together um, explanatory statements to be, to be, um, included in the mailing and posted at appropriate locations um, at the vote.
That's going to come down the line, yep.
Yeah. Yeah, because the date, people might not read the mailer, but when they're standing and voting, they need to understand what it says.
Will you, you still second the motion, Paula?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 All right, um, I think we're good on charter, yes?
Did you do the, uh, did you also do the, uh, possible, um, non-binding question? Did you pass that?
Yes, separately.
Okay, that's separately passed. Everybody agree?
Yep.
You did, okay, I just want to make sure. All right, well, Carol and I will work on that, we'll see what we can do.
Okay, thanks, Dennis.
Secretary of State's, there's an attorney at the Secretary of State's office who will let me know.
Okay.
Checking on that right away. Thank you all very much for, uh, your patience with me, I appreciate it.
I know, we're, we're good.
I will stay for the rest of the meeting.
Um, Eric, do we, uh, do we need Dennis for anything else?
Uh, not that I know of.
Okay.
At this point.
All right, Dennis, thank you. If you do need to pop off, feel free.
Uh, I'm going to stick for a while.
Okay.
See what goes on. It's only nine oh eight for quite a long.
Yeah, well, we're going to try to move along here.
Early. I'll have to meet you tomorrow night, so.
All right, I'm sorry, I just needed to turn some AC on, it's a little warmer here. All right, um, okay, moving on. Um, old business. Finance Department Transition, I think we kind of covered that a little bit in our, already. Um, eight A, eight B Community Say RFP, as I explained, we're just waiting on a couple little detail things. Uh, eight C, seriously, Steve Grant, you covered some of that. Um, Eric, is there anything else we need to address?
Uh, I don't have anything major unless you want to see a picture of what we're proposing, in which case I'd share my screen and show you a picture.
Folks want to see that? Yeah, all right. Paul, Jeff, Scott?
Certainly.
I saw it today.
Actually, you know what? Can you just email it to us later?
Okay.
Take a screenshot and email it, so we can just kind of move on here. Uh, car, car charging station at Town Hall, it came through CIP. We universally agreed to it. Um, Eric, do you want to do it briefly, or?
Uh, no, just to say that the charger grant is into Eversource. Um, we received a notification that they've received the application. We haven't heard back from it. Um, I think we got it in in time, we'll get it, but I'm not positive because, again, a lot of people applied for that and it's a first come, first served grant.
Okay. Um, okay, um, town personnel policy?
Let's skip that for now.
Okay, senior transportation vehicle parking?
Uh, we still have them parked in the old garage. We haven't really made any move to move them yet. We know we need to, but we haven't.
Uh, educational funding on job skills, we're still working on a policy for that, right?
Yeah, I'm going to punt this for now because I think one of the unions wants to come back uh, with a recommendation to the town as part of their bargaining position.
Okay. Um, do we need a purchase of a portable PA system?
I haven't found one to buy yet. If either Paula or, uh, Jeff finds me one to buy, I'd be happy to purchase it.
I'll get it, I'll, I'll work, I'll work on it. I just spent on vacation, so.
Perfect, thanks, Jeff. All right, uh, rolling into nine, new business. Purchasing policy waiver.
Okay, so I sent you all and put in the packet a memorandum uh, discussing requesting a waiver purchasing policy rules. You've already approved it for the steep grant. I would like to also get a waiver approved for the car charger installation. And there's two problems with this. Number one, this was a grant that had to be executed in as soon as possible because it's a first come, first served grant.
Right.
Um, and secondly, I didn't have the expertise to put this in. Um, I asked Rick, um, whether, uh, Rick Langley, whether he would help me with the grant application um, and to figure out how this was possible. um, and to figure out how this was possible. So I used him to help me uh, you know, develop the grant application um, with the understanding that if we got it, I would use him as the electrician to install. Total cost is over fifteen thousand dollars. However, the only thing the town is gonna pay for in the end is half the cost of the physical charger. And the physical charger, we're buying off a state list. The state has a list of like, you know, six or seven of these that are approved for the program. So it's not like we had a ton of options um, with that anyway. Um, I suspect if I had had to go out and hire an MEP upfront to design this program, design this, we would amount out a couple thousand dollars.
I mean, I, I think to be fair, Eric, it, it sounds like you've done your due diligence on it. I don't have an issue with it. Um, I would make a motion that we um, make a waiver for the car charger installation.
A second.
Discussion, Scott, Jeff? All in favor? I.
I.
Jeff?
I.
Thank you. Moving on. Uh. We did nine B already. Um, we talked about Long Hill Bridge already, audit status, we already discussed. Um, talked about the seventy K left over for twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, we talked about nine F already, nine G, uh, nine H, can we discuss that real quick? Panic Buttons?
So, sorry, I had to grab my notes. So uh, we don't have any real simple solutions for this. I, I did reach out to Associated Security again, who's the company I'd been dealing with, um, which was a recommendation from the guy who put our security cameras in. Um, we know we're gonna end up, if we do it, with a monitoring service. And, you know, we know we're gonna have to put in essentially a commercial version of a burglar alarm and then tie in wireless um, you know, panic buttons to it. What I don't have is a real cost basis for doing that. I mean, my bigger concern is that I'm not sure this really saves us kind of all that much time because now we gotta call a monitoring service, you know, and the monitoring service has to call you to the fire department or the dispatch. Um, you know, when our existing service, you hit the alert and anybody in the building, you know, you hit the alert button on your phone and anybody in the building can call nine-one-one. So, I'm not convinced this is a worthwhile endeavor, but I'm, I'm not giving up on it until I have at least a cost estimate for you.
Well, I would, go ahead Eric, go ahead Paul.
Is there ever a time where somebody's in the building alone?
Sure, I'm in the building alone all the time.
Carol Lee as well.
Yep.
Alright, well, you know, ob- obviously you've got a lot of other irons in the fire. Um, I think we'd still like to see what it looks like, but certainly not on your priority list for tomorrow. Um.
Yeah, just, just one more thing. Like, do we have any kind of emergency plan with the employees like at Town Hall?
Um, and to be perfectly honest with you, no. I mean, we've, we've chatted about it informally.
Um, you know. Let's maybe, let's kick that to the Safety Committee and let them talk about that. We have a safety.
Yeah, because just, just something like a, you know, like a, a thing for the employees, like if they're gonna get out of the building, a meeting area.
Yeah.
You know, calling nine-one-one, that type of thing, evacuation plan.
Yeah.
I mean, we do have an evacuation plan for the building. Um. Uh. Yep.
Let's punt that to the Safety Committee and actually let's, let's, as a, before we spend any more time on it, let's put it back to them as to whether or not this is something that's still on their priority list. Can we do that?
Okay.
Paula, Jeff, you okay with that Scott?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Just, this was brought up uh, multiple times in the employee meeting.
Yeah, well, let's, let's let the safety, let's let the Safety Committee take a look at it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it. I just want to make sure it gets addressed.
Yeah, we'll get an answer back on the Safety Committee and then, and they'll get to Eric some time to also to kind of, you know, work the rest of this. Um, search suppressor, Scott, that's you, right?
Uh, I think Jeff Murray wanted this added.
I'm sorry, that was Scott.
No, the, the discussion with Scott, did those uh, did those search suppressors get uh, ruined in the last lightning storm?
I, I don't believe they did Jeff.
Okay.
What you told me, the power had to be on when pump turned on, it's probably accurate and uh, but we do, you're, you're right, we should have replacements for all those things and we should also have replacements for the um, actual irrigation control, the, the power modules and the uh, different zone modules. And we have a storage location, we have a storage location for those at Public Works. Yeah, we, we should be making one.
Yeah.
Taking care of that stuff.
Is there any way we could get a, a quote from them, from electrician or just like what would be a, provide those or should we just, should we just take our old quote and just order more?
Yes, I think that's a good idea. Alright, so Scott, do you want to facilitate that? Yeah, I'll talk to Eric about it. Okay.
Now, remember, these things aren't free, so, you know, again, you're, you're proposing to spend, you know, several thousand dollars on things that aren't budgeted. Just so that you're aware of that.
Well, we can always take the Cool Program rent checks, there's some money there.
Oh yeah.
Um, no.
No, okay.
Moving on.
Well, this, I mean, there's, there's gotta be money in maintenance, correct?
Maintenance of what?
Well, you got building maintenance, right?
Yep. If you define a field as a building, then sure.
I would define it as a town structure or a building. And if we're gonna, if we, if we have these things on spares, if we have a busy summer and we lose one of these and we risk losing that sprinkler controller, which is two, over two thousand dollars, correct me if I'm wrong Scott?
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's worthwhile and, and saves us money in the long run if we have spares.
Understood.
And, and.
And a pump. You know, if we lose that pump, it's a significant amount of money.
Exactly, and if we have those spares, we don't have to have someone running around in their uh, spare time finding spares. Well, listen, it's not, it's not if, it's when we're gonna lose them. Okay, if we start getting into the four or five thousand dollar range, then we probably need to have a conversation about it.
No, I think it's, I think it'd be under a thousand, it'd probably like five, six hundred bucks.
Okay, alright, I'm just saying, if we start getting up into the thousands, let's come back to this. Um, okay, Cool Program Rent Checks, uh, we kicked that, that's Board of Finance really anyways. Status for Open Board Positions, Town Treasure, we already, you know, we've got two applications, Administrative Assistance. Um, where are we at with that? Is it posted?
So yeah, it's been posted. We have got a ton of applicants, probably over fifty at this point. Not necessarily a lot of good applicants, but um, a bunch of applicants. I've told Paula I would whittle it down to ten for.
Was it, was that listed as part-time?
Yes, of course.
It was, okay.
Yeah, very definitely. Um, what we have not gotten any applications for is Board Clerk, and that's unfortunate. We're still kind of struggling finding a permanent replacement for the land use boards.
Um, can the Board Clerk, and this is something, you know, I, and I guess I'm also asking about this because, you know, we have Marina on the call. Why, why are we having the person be on the meeting and then, unless they're doing minutes while they're on the meeting? If they're not doing them live, then we should have them just be listening to the, to the recording back and doing it that way. Would that not, go ahead.
On some occasions we do, but we don't necessarily, the land use boards aren't necessarily the most tech savvy boards out there. And the Board Clerk usually handles the recording um, and the nuts and bolts of the meeting to begin.
Okay.
Doesn't mean it has to happen that way, but that's what typically happens.
I wonder if we can change the thing though, so they're not required to be on the meeting and they can just do it, you know, within forty-eight hours or whatever the prime is, you know?
Right, I mean, we let people know that anyway. I mean, that happens not infrequently as it is.
Alright. So is there a reason that we have Marina on these meetings now, right now?
Uh, well.
Money side too.
Say that again?
I'm on from the finance side too, for any questions.
Okay, well, I mean, if we're asking you to be out from the finance side, well, you know, we've have, we have a policy in place that we try to get town, town employees off calls as quick as possible. So.
Yep.
We can, you know, so that you're not eating up time, you know, on these meetings, so. Um, I don't believe we actually have anything else on finance for you, so you're, you're more than welcome to hop off at this point.
Okay, that's fine.
And then in the future, we'll address that. If you're, if you're gonna be out for Board of Finance, I will address accordingly so that you can get off quickly.
Well, I mean, we haven't gotten to any of the Board of Finance reports yet.
I understand that, but it's Board of Finance reports. We've already gone through audit per department, right?
Okay.
Unless, I don't believe, does anybody have a question specifically regarding the, the financials?
No.
Murray, Scott, Person? There we go.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you Marina.
No problem.
Um.
Have, I got, I have a question for Eric. Have we gotten anything for, we've been putting it out there for uh, filling the RAM Board of Ed um, position? Have we gotten anybody sending in anything?
As far as I know, we haven't gotten any applications. I asked that of the town clerk a while back and the answer I got was no application so far. I have not asked her since she got back from vacation, so it's possible one came in in the last week and I'm unaware of it.
Sure, but she's, today was her first day back, so.
Can we, um, can we also maybe just flag the, the Chair of the DGC and the RTC to remind them we're still looking for someone?
Sure.
Um, Meeting Minute Approval? Monday, June thirteenth, Monday, June twenty-seventh. Any questions, corrections on those? I'm gonna do them individually because Paula, you weren't on the special meeting, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so approval of the Monday, June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two regular meeting minutes, all in favor?
Alright. Alright.
Approval of the Monday, June twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two public meeting minutes, all in favor?
Alright. I.
One abstention, Paula?
Yes, I.
Um. Alright, Finance Department Report, Revenue Summary, Town Budget Summary, Town Road. Did you have anything on Town Road, update that needs to be addressed directly or are you just trying to give us a kind of where we're at?
Nope, this is just to where we're at.
Okay. Budgets, appropriation transfers, over expenditure requests. Was there something in the packet on that?
There was not.
Okay.
And here's the ultimate problem, you know, and that is what the Board of Finance asked was that we get through the last payroll in June and then give them one packet of all the transfers.
Okay.
Um, you know, as opposed to what we started to do, which was to give, tell the Board of Selectmen, then give them some of them in April, some of them in May, and the final wrap-up in June. Because of the dates involved, there was no Board of Selectmen meeting in there. So we gave them all to the Board of Finance and they approved them all, which, you know, it's their policy and how they want to do it, so they have the right to waive that. I think if they so chose, and they so chose.
I don't have any, I'm personally, I think the Board of Finance can run finance and we have enough stuff on our plate unless there's a specific issue, so. I don't have any issue with that. Anyone else?
No.
Nope, Jeff, Murray? Nope, okay, moving on. Alright, uh, refund requests?
Uh, there are um, two refund requests in the packet and I apologize for not having a motion pre-made. Um.
Fine, I gotta go back in, I just lost my connection.
Um, for total tax refunds, uh, one thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-six cents.
Okay, we need the names though, right?
Uh, one of them would be Nissan, because it's a lease, and the other one is Taft Val, or Valerie Taft.
Okay.
It should be page forty-seven of the packet.
Thank you. For some reason I got put it out of that. Alright, um, oh yeah, I don't see them. Alright, so we have a, I, I make a motion, we approve the refund to Nissan for one thousand, eighty-four dollars and fourteen cents under section twelve dash one twenty-nine and Taft Valerie for a hundred and two dollars and forty-two cents under section twelve dash one twenty-nine.
One second.
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Alright.
Okay. Uh. Anything specific in the Department Reports that you think we need to address Eric?
Uh, no, actually, unless you have questions for me regarding them.
Nope, I'm good. Um, I already talked to Public Works about the, you know, Jay's gonna be, Jay cleared up his reports, so at least they make a little more sense and I'm good with the new version. You'll see them in your packet, I think so. Alright. Uh, Correspondents, fifteen?
Uh, none that I know of.
Okay, Public Speak. Uh, start with Valerie.
Set.
Joan Hebert? Alright, next Voice Channel, Amber Amatras.
Sorry, I'm all set. I couldn't unmute.
We gotta get you faster Joanne.
I know, I was clicking.
You've got, you're on every meeting, you're still slow. Thank you for being on the meetings though.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, Amber?
I'm all set.
Diane Cho Cat?
All set.
Okay. Uh, we are going to go into sixteen sixteen B, Contract Negotiations and sixteen C, Contract Renewal. Uh, Executive Session.
Alright.
So.
Got a motion?
Motion to move into Executive Session at nine-thirty PM?
Okay, and exactly who do you want in the Executive Session?
Uh, Board of Selectmen, yourself, and um, Dennis is out. Thanks Dennis, appreciate it.
You, thank you.
Thank you Dennis.
Nine thirty, only nine thirty and you're already into uh, the end. Very impressive. I'm gonna tell McGuire what a great job you did Adrian.
Oh God, don't go, don't, don't get me in trouble.
Well, you moved it, you moved the agenda forward, that's important. Thank you all and have a great night and.
Jeff, no I did not.
I do what I can. Anyways, uh, we are back at uh, nine fifty-two. Um, I would make a motion that we all empower Eric to sign the, the, I know I'm gonna say it wrong, M-I-E-U?
M-E.
I'm sorry, I can't hear over the dog. Say it again?
M-E-I-U.
M-E-I-U, uh, contract, um, and to enter negotiations with Ask Me. Second?
All second.
All seconds, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Alright. Alright.
Motion to adjourn at nine fifty-three? Oh, did we start recording? Yeah, we did, great. Motion to adjourn nine fifty-three?
Second.
All in favor? I.
I.
Thanks. Thanks, everybody. Sorry it was as long as it was. I know we had a, we got a, had a lot there, but hopefully we went and packed what we needed to, so.
All right.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.